All right, let's call the meeting to order, please. I invite those willing and able to stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So.
Thank you, Mr. Oy. Welcome back, sir. Do I have a second?
Nice to be back.
A second.
Thank you, Mrs. Pals. Any want to add anything about that or just discuss that?
Nope.
Okay. All right, all those in favor of approving the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Visitors, none. Okay, thank you. Moving on to number five. Consent agenda. Do I have any items that you would like pulled out from 5.1 down to 5.9? Anyone have any of those that you would like to pull out individually to discuss? Hearing none. So do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, 5.1 through 5.9?
So.
Is that you, Mr. Botts?
Yep.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Any other discussion on that? Any other thoughts or questions? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to number six, administrative reports, 6.1 Admin, 611.
This is the first budget year to date for fiscal year '18, as I ran the first close of the books. And we're at 17 percent. Actually, we were at 13 percent, which doesn't mean a whole lot because you pay your bills at different times. We made a few minor budget transfers, nothing major. But all I have.
Any questions? Jackie? Questions?
I guess the 17, that's three percentage points higher than last year, but doesn't alarm you?
Not a yellow or a...
Go ice cream.
So I don't have to panic?
No, not yet.
Okay.
I'll let you know.
You'll let me know ahead of time?
Prior to the meeting.
Okay, thanks.
Happy day of the meeting.
Happy day.
Thank you, Jackie. 6.1.2, Mr. Strasser.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Nice to see Mr. Botts in a tie tonight. Two things. First of all, I just wanted to let you all know that our one-to-one program up here seems to be moving in a pretty good manner. I've heard some positive comments. I'm starting to see kids utilizing the one-to-one devices in the classrooms. And I'm sure I'll see more of that as we go throughout the year. You know, every once in a while, we have some hiccups with devices, not necessarily either working well. It might be just kind of a bad laptop. We've had a couple of those. And we get our occasional cracked screen. And you know, you got a lot of kids going through their days with devices. So overall, for the first three to four weeks here, I've been pretty pleased with where we're at in terms of our one-to-one approach. The other thing was it is homecoming week, so we've got our coronation tonight and a lot of activities that culminate on homecoming Friday. And we've got the community organizers, parents who've come together and helped us out with activities after the football game as well. So that's another really neat thing that we have going on throughout this week. So last thing, you know, it's always exciting to have the axe back in Pipestone. So you guys did a great job the other night. Fun football game over in the burn. Questions or...
Just going back to the one-on-one. Now, did I, can I hear through the grapevine that the kids are allowed to bring backpacks now into the classrooms to carry those devices? Is that correct or did I not?
It is correct.
Did I not hear correctly?
Nope.
And there's no concerns regarding any of that at all?
Oh, I'd say there's, there's always some kind of concern, but...
Yeah, okay.
No, what we did, and that's at the high school level. So when we talked as a staff at the beginning of the year, we looked at all the things that kids are having to carry. From, you know, you add a laptop to the books. And you know, some of those books are, they're not skinny. We allow water bottles, so they've got a lot of things that they're juggling. And we looked at it. We've always been hesitant because of the idea, what do you bring in a backpack? So it's kind of been a safety issue. But as a staff, we decided that that would be something we wanted to try.
Yeah.
We've seen, I haven't seen the backpacks being abused. I'm hoping that because we allow that, that we're going to have less issues with breakage of our devices over time.
Right, yeah. No, no, that's...
At least that's my theory on that.
Okay.
So we'll kind of see. But yeah, that's the approach we're taking. And so far, I think it's been good. I think we, it's also one of the unintended, unintended aspects, not consequences, is we've reduced kids in the hall. Because normally, kids are, they're all cramming into the locker pod area and trying to get through. Haven't seen it near as much. Now, we still have some kids, but you know, we're there to the bell and getting to class, trying to get to class on time. But I think it's been a much smoother movement throughout the school day for our students with backpacks.
Any other questions, your board? All right, thank you. Moving on to 6.1.3, Melanie.
Hi.
Hello.
This was a busy month so far. We started working with the benchmark reports came out last week on September, the last Monday they came out. And our staff had, the reading staff had them in their hands and we're analyzing them on Wednesday. So we had some good conversation about where we're at and where we need to go. And gave them seeds for future PLC meetings of things that they can work on and look for and ideas of where they can go with that. Last week on Thursday, I attended the Inspiring Students to Learn Mathematics: Leading and Sustaining a Coherent Vision for Mathematics Teaching and Learning at MDE. It is a two-day training.
That's a long title.
Long title. Two days. It'll be again in February with the intention that some districts brought their whole math team with. And I knew we weren't ready for that yet. There's a lot of PLC talk. It was presented by Timothy Canneld, who is one of the original founders of the PLC process. He worked with the Dufores at the school that they had worked at. So this is something I will be working with throughout this school year and next with our math department. But the great thing is, is a lot of the ideas can be given and used in any content area. So I had taken a picture of the book at the beginning of the workshop and texted it to the admin team. And I'm like, hmm, nice book. Hearing lots of the same things that I've been talking about. So I was really excited to be there. And it was nice to see that the plans that I have are on the right path. So looking forward to working with the math team later this week, getting started with them and looking at their benchmark reports.
Where we've been? You're welcome. Any questions for Mel? No questions for Mel? Mr. Anderson is going to add a little for this department.
For the elementary, I think they've had a pretty good start to the year. I know that last week, the temps in the buildings got a little bit miserable, but they came back down again this week. I'd like to add that at Hill Elementary, the lockers were put in. So and over there, they look really nice. And so it's nice that we have those lockers over there. And they're very grateful for that. And then on Wednesday night, we got a big event for our elementary. It's the kickoff. And we're doing that at Brown Elementary from 4:30 to 6:30.
Yeah.
And there's a, what is it? There's a hot meal.
Yeah.
We got all the fun stuff like we had last year. And it was great attendance last year. So I don't know, Tammy, if you've got anything to add to that or...
Yes, yeah, the elementary booster club is putting this on. So we have, you know, a couple bouncy houses, some slides, an obstacle kind of course. There wasn't much for us because I didn't take good notes. Paige had kind of, they had kind of ran with it. And so we're kind of starting new. We kind of had an idea of everything that we did. But with, you know, the new social worker there, you know, we're both kind of trying to figure out what we want to do and kind of get everything organized. But yeah, we'll serve a hot dog meal. Yeah, and just kind of have some different organizations from around the community hopefully are going to show up. You know, we've got, you know, I have some and, you know, she's responsible for contacting some other ones. But yeah, so hopefully we'll get a good turnout. I have no idea how many we served last year. So yeah, I know it was a lot. So yeah, so I'm trying to go through all my crazy notes and try and figure out what to plan for. I mean, you can't really plan. You just, we'll have enough and hopefully it'll be good. Yeah, so yeah, we'll just alternate schools every year. Looks like it's going to be good weather. So yeah.
Which, Cory, do you have something going on Wednesday as well with the students and having kids or something afterwards?
I do. Yes. Wednesday, we have an assembly, you're part of that.
That's why I can't be there, I can't be.
Yeah, and I can't remember the exact timeframes that they're doing afterwards. But it's, it's, it's simply for our middle school and then our high school. And it's Chris Porter, John Porter, Wendy. And the idea is to share with kids stories of people from Pipestone who had a lot of experiences and are still in Pipestone. And just kind of sharing their stories, trying to help young people see different things. So that's what they're going to do for part of Wednesday afternoon.
Thank you.
Cool.
All right, so any other comments for Mel or Cory or Jackie? Okay, moving on to 6.2, school board members. Anyone have any reports?
Negotiations.
Oh, you want me to take it? I do. Okay, so we met last week? Yeah, last week. And we're getting close. We're getting close. We really are. You know, we presented our offer and they kind of stuck with their offer. So we'll just kind of see if they rethink what they want to do or where we're going to be at our next one. I don't remember the date that we set.
October.
It was like the middle of October. 11th? Does that seem right? Yeah. So, but again, you know, got a few more things, a few more things crossed off our list, you know, regarding just some language things. And yeah, it's all been going pretty smoothly, I think. Yeah.
So the next negotiations meeting is the 11th?
October 11th.
October 11th.
All right, thank you. Any other board members? Any other reports? No? Okay, moving on to 6.3, Mr. Anderson.
All right, enrollment is currently at about 11.52 for the year. That's up from last year. So we'll see how that all plays out. As you know, that number will go up and down through the months. But that's our number. I think we budgeted for a little less than that or less than what we had last year. So in one way, that's good because we make sure that we're not going to come up short with our budget projections. So that's my enrollment. I have a tennis court project. As you can probably see, the fences are going up. They are slated to come out and begin putting the surface on tomorrow. And then I don't know, we're all fencing and they will be doing landscaping. Most, for the most part, it should be fairly complete. Next Monday, we're supposed to do kind of a punchless walkthrough in where that's at. Just so you know, October 2nd, next Monday, is also a potential, it is a playoff game or match. And we are eligible to host the way it sounds. So we're hoping that we will be able to host that here in Pipestone. But when I talked to the construction folks today, it was like, they didn't want to be held to anything. But we are hoping for that. I did want to bring up something to the board. I mean, as far as opening, or do you want to have any type of ceremony for the tennis courts? Or do you just want to go play?
Yeah.
I don't know if you want to do any type of ceremonial thing or just let the tennis team do it and we're good?
Yeah.
All right. So if we get to play, maybe we'll have a little something before their match.
Yeah, I think that would be...
We'll try to do something.
That's a pretty big thing that we've accomplished. I mean, I think it's good to celebrate those things. So, you know, we don't have to, we don't have a DJ and all that. The band maybe come and play, I don't know.
Yeah, it's good.
Yes.
A big scissors and a ribbon.
Yeah.
Where do you get the big scissor?
Chambers.
Chambers. Check that out. All right.
Sheer done.
Crack the whip on the contractor.
Well, that's where, I think, they were, they were expected to have substantial completion by October 2nd, which is where they're at. You know, the weather, I mean, I saw them up here, they were up here this weekend trying to get some concrete poured. So I mean, they've, when they've had their timelines, they've done a pretty good job of getting that in. So I think they just don't want to have to disappoint anybody, so they're not going to make any promises. But we'll keep pushing there on that. But otherwise, I think everything's gone pretty well as far as I know with that project. And it looks good out there. I think that's going to be a great place. So good, good deal. My next item was phase three training for school board. We did phase one and phase two. Phase three is up. I don't know if anybody is interested in that. Anybody?
I know, it's just the dates don't work. I think the first ones in St. Cloud are right. Is that October?
October 14th in St. Cloud and October 27th in St. Peter. Basically, the focus is on a high-performing team with decision-making, board dynamics, small group interactions, and some of the stages of board development.
The 14th is a Saturday.
14th is a Saturday, the 27th is a Friday. I am planning to go up to St. Cloud. I have a meeting in the cities on the 13th. And I'm just going to stay at my sister's and head to St. Cloud for the Saturday because I'd like to see how all of these phases work. So if you are interested, can you call Deb and we'll make arrangements for you and how that'll work. So.
Anyone else interested on the Friday one or no?
I can't do the 14th.
Yeah, I'm like, I can't do the 14th. I maybe could do the 27th.
I might be able to, so I disagree.
Maybe? Yeah. Okay. Okay. I'm interested though.
Okay.
But not alone.
I think the, the deadline is October 20th. But you know, if we can maybe know in the next couple of weeks, is that, and Deb, maybe we'll have a reminder. And then she can go, let her know and we'll get, so she can sign you all up. Okay? Also, we have our annual conference in January. I'd just like to, I mean, is everybody planning on that again?
I am.
Yeah, shoot out those dates again. You got them? I know I'm probably, I think I put them on my calendar already, but...
I do not have them in front of me, but... Is that like the second week in January?
So with January 17th? Be our reorganization meeting then? The first is a Monday and then it would be May? Have that reorganization?
I would say...
January 11th and 12th.
11th and 12th.
So we have a reorganization?
Yep.
Reorganization is the 9th? Is that what you're asking? January 8th? That's a Monday, right?
Yeah.
For the reorganizational meeting that we have.
It's the first Monday.
The 8th?
January 8th.
Yeah, so it'd be the first Monday that we can, right? Which is January 8th. I think so. Because I think the first is on a Monday.
Well, if you can get those dates, and again, probably next month if we want to make a decision on that or who's going to go, we can start. They haven't sent out registrations for that, but...
I'm going. It's my last hurrah.
It's a good, it's a good conference.
It is.
All right. My next item was student school board member. And I know that that was something that you had brought up last year. And so I spoke with Mr. Strasser about maybe doing a little searching and putting some feelers out. And we actually have a couple of students who are interested. One is here tonight, Aspen Skelouts. Welcome, Aspen.
Hi.
I gave you a sheet that I got from MSBA that talks a little bit about some things to consider. You know, I mean, this kind of does a pretty nice job that student school board members really don't get involved with a lot of the, you know, big decisions that have to be made. But they do sit, I mean, we should probably have them sit at the board. MSBA recommends they sit at the table with us. So we would expand this and give another spot. And that they would have access to board book and are there for a lot of the kind of feedback and can ask questions. They can request things to go on the agenda and such. But I think it's a great opportunity, very good for some students who want to get this experience and be a part of a board of directors. So a couple of things that I was just wondering is, is, you know, we have two that are interested. Are you okay with us having two? But, or how far do we want to go? And then if we're going to start limiting, how do you want that to be? Any ideas or suggestions on how we make those selections? Because they leave, it's really great in here. They say, that's a, that's a local decision. That's a local decision. That's, you know, so...
Well, some of the meetings I attended up at MSBA, most of those school districts had two. They had a junior and a senior. So that they, that junior would then just stay on as a senior. And I think that, the cohesiveness of that is a good thing. And then they, they got to be able to get out to, you know, even the grade schools and see what those kids want done and get their input as well. Personally, I'd like to see two, one junior, one senior.
Okay. That's what we got right now, inquiry.
That's a good idea.
I think that's, I think it is going to get through.
Let's do it.
And I think as a junior, whoever is going to come in as a junior needs to understand this is a two-year commitment for the...
Would allow for some mentorship then as they move up and mentor them next along.
And I mean, I think you can have it be where the student body selects if there gets to be multiple kids that are interested or the board can select or we can maybe have to talk a little bit about that. We don't have to right now because we only have two, but maybe an application.
Application of some type.
Yeah, I would rather not have the student body decide.
No, have some sort of criteria or qualifications.
Do an interview or, I mean, you know, I mean, just, I mean, nothing difficult by any means. But you know, you want to make sure that you've got kids that are comfortable speaking in front of people if there's a huge room or, you know...
Well, I know even when I was appointed, there were three questions. One, I think we still have to answer them even as elected, but there were three questions that I had to answer and write out the answers to and give to the rest of the board.
Oh, right, right, right.
So if there are a few questions that they, if there are more.
If there are more then, right.
Right now, we think that's perfect.
Yeah.
But, you know...
We might want to have them answer then, when we know where they're at. And if they can say, oh, you want to do it, come aboard. They should.
I think I can put something together for that. So the other things are, I mean, they just mentioned in here. I mean, it isn't where you're putting students in situations where they have to have, or they get access to maybe confidential information. I mean, there is some things that they cannot do, but for the most part, they can be a part. And if they want to share some insights and have other things, they can do that. So.
That's great.
All right, well, we will move forward with that. And for next month, I will talk to the board members and student board members. And we'll have to expand this configuration out somehow and get them up here and see if we can find a microphone for you and everything. How's that sound? All right, well, we will move forward with that then. I had down also that the J.C.'s have offered a donation for a fence at the softball field. This is our main complex. We put a temporary fence up every year out there. And they've approached Coach Baumann, who said that he would take care of getting the fence put up and do all that. And they would just set up a permanent fence inside there. And I just said I should really bring that to all of you. Does anybody have any concerns about that or...
Thank you, J.C.
Sounds good.
Yeah, it's a great opportunity. We were looking at having to get in the donations, but that hasn't quite come through yet. But I still thought, I think Mr. Baumann wanted to try to get going on that. So I said, well, let me just bring it to you guys and get going on it. But they'll set it up and it'll be a nice little complex out there.
That's nice.
And then operating levy update, I just wanted, you know, I've sent out a few things. I've done a brochure that we had out at the beginning of the school year. You probably saw that. And I think we had a few of these sitting out. And it's got just kind of a front and back info. You know, it isn't got everything, but it's got kind of the nuts and bolts of things. I did a newsletter for parents that we sent out and has a little bit more information on it. And then tomorrow, I worked with the local cable access to give a little interview that'll be aired. And also, the radio is starting to run a few ads just to get people's awareness of that. My goal is, and I think our goal is, is that we want the community to know what's going on and that there's a vote here in November. And if you got questions, you know, let us know. If you hear anything or, you know. And if I do get requests to go and meet with different organizations, it really would be nice if a board member could attend with me. So I tried, I know you can't keep your calendars totally clear. But when things come up, I'll probably shoot something out to you. And if we could try to get on a rotation or if there's, I don't know, maybe there won't be many at all. But if there are, it's just as good for a board member, I think, to be there to hear what the concerns are or what the issues are so that you have that, are also aware of that. So. And then we have, we have other timelines that we have to do with this and we've met them. But one is a big mailing that Deb has been working on and election judges, which you see, we've got that in the agenda for approval. But the mailing?
The mailing is the notice that you approved in July.
And we have to send that out in a certain period?
Yeah, between October 9th and 23rd.
So every...
About 4,200 pieces.
And is that taxpayers, district taxpayers get, is that who we have to mail these to?
It is. People who own property in the district.
Okay. So every one of them have to be given this notice that there's going to be an election. One of the issues is, is not all of them maybe live in the school district? That doesn't mean, but it's a notice that's saying, we're having something going on and you own property in the school district. But if they don't live here, they, that doesn't mean they get to vote. But it is a notification that this is going on. So sometimes that gets confusing and, you know, so you may hear some things on that. It's, it's just a legal requirement that we have, that we have to get this information out. So Deb is on top of all that and got the labels from the county and so all about making copies. That machine just kind of turns them out. So there, that's where that's at. And then the tax calculator, I didn't know if we wanted to do that. And about one hour after I sent out the newsletter, I got, we started getting calls from, ooh, do we talk to it to county to find out how much we pay? And it's like, so I were, I'd like to put the tax, we already ordered it. Put the tax calculator on the website so people can go in. If they know their property valuation, they can type that in and see what it is. And it's got all the different, and again, we even put on agricultural land. And it's going to show zero because the operating levy does not go on agricultural farmland. It goes on the house and one acre, which, you know, it'll show that. So they could figure that's good to have that on there. It's a reasonable resource. You guys are okay with, it took a little, I just decided after, I was going to wait. And then like one hour after we put it out, it was like, this is the first question. Then Tyler at the county, he's like, oh, they don't have, that's not, they don't have our property tax stuff. They can't say anything right now. So it's all estimations based on this information. So that's where that's at.
Good. And our October 10th, first of the week?
On October 10th, we're having our community information meeting here. So we'll, we'll see what, hopefully you can make it and people will show up. We'll find out about that. That's all I got.
All right. Any other questions for the superintendent? Any other questions for him? Moving on to number seven, old business, there is none. So moving on to number eight, new...
So, moving on to number eight, new business, 8.1, National FFA trip, Heidi.
Is that light green on?
Yeah.
It is.
I have to speak.
Probably pick you up pretty well.
Okay. Hello, everyone. I'm Heidi Brandt. I'm the agriculture education teacher and FFA advisor here in Pipestone. And at the end of October, we will be taking some FFA members to the National Convention in Indianapolis. We have our meets team that's going to be competing, that consists of four members, and they're coached by Phil Berg. And then, in addition, we have five students that are going to be traveling on a regional bus to serve as delegates from our chapter. And so, we are requesting permission to go on this trip, and also requesting the district to help assist with the transportation that the judging team would be taking down for the trip, to request a suburban. They will be stopping at a few different universities to practice workouts along the way prior to their national competition. In addition, for a substitute teacher for me to be gone for three days, and also the registration cost for the five delegates that are attending. The FFA chapter is picking up on functions, meals, and hotel costs, and any other extra expenses that we have to pay for parking downtown and different areas like that. Do you guys have any questions for me?
So, the total cost you're asking for from the district is the 1249?
Yes.
And if I'm not mistaken, that's kind of how we've done that. Every year, we've kind of worked with the FFA, and they've helped out, so.
Really, any different sports team going to the state tournament? Going to a national tournament, and, really?
So, any other questions for Heidi? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Yep.
To have a motion to accept to help the National FFA trip?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Botts, and thank you, Mr. Oy. Any other discussion on that? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of assisting with those, that 1249 for the National FFA trip? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 8.2, approval of levy limitation and certification report for 2017 payable 2018. Set date.
Last Monday, Jackie and I went up to Marshall and listened to Tom Melcher talk about our levy certification report. And so, it's a 40-page document this year that shows us all the revenues and such that we get. And before I turn it over to Jackie, I guess, I just want to make sure that this is an initial that we put out to MDE. We do not finalize this until December. We finalize our levy with the truth of taxation hearing. The numbers right now on this trip is because, or, not on this trip. We just did a trip. The numbers on this levy certification report reflect that we do not have an operating levy. The vote is in November, so there's a significant dollar amount less in this initial levy. And it is not anything final that you're doing, but we do need to send this in to the state, who then gets in contact with the county, so they can begin this process. But they do know we have an election in November, and from there, if they're, if the levies pass, we're then able to put that in on for the final certification, so. With that, if you've got any questions, let me know, but with that, turn it over to Jackie for what's in there.
I don't have a lot to say, other than, you guys all have the sheet. I give you this every year, where I compare this year's levy to last year's levy. And then what I do is, then I try to explain the large differences. Has anyone, have you guys had a chance to look at it?
Yep.
Does anyone have any questions? And I know one of the questions was, oh, we told the public that we would be reducing the long-term facilities maintenance revenue by the amount of the lease for the tennis courts. And this year, that payment, because we only have an interest payment on the amount we borrowed, would be $12,857.25. And if you look at this levy report, if you go to page 10, line 420, if anyone's wondering, it'll say, "District requested reduction for maximum of the $12,857.25." So, that's where that's at. So, if anyone's wondering, you can point that to them and say it has been deducted from the long-term deferred maintenance revenue. Next year, it'll be more along the lines of $90,000, because it'll be an interest and a principal payment. I'm trying to think what else. And obviously, the operating levy is down, because we don't have our operating levy in there. That's the first big difference. The student achieved level, we don't receive that money anymore, so therefore, we're not, we're getting zero for that. The operating capital, the state changed the formula, so we're actually receiving more state aid for operating capital this year, so that's why that's down compared to last year. The state always has a formula where they determine the levy aid split. The formula changed, so we're getting more state aid than levy. Lease levy, that's increased, and that's basically due to adding the tennis courts and the preschool leases in Jasper and Pipestone, and then we have the Minnesota West lease down there also. Long-term facilities maintenance, that increased, because basically, the formula increased to $380 as compared to $292.
If you recall, long-term facility maintenance is a, is a rather new thing, and they put that in in a three-year phase-in, so they didn't dump all that money on the, on the levy in one year. So, that's why it went up another $88 this year. So, it was a gradual increase with the LTFM, and that's our dollars to, to keep up with our stuff, and, so.
Other than that, those are the major differences?
So, one question that comes every once in a while is, is this, this LTFM's going to keep going up every year. This is the last year. Now, it's at the rate that it will be at, and it'll, it will not go up next year again, so. And that's based on a formula of the age of our buildings and this and that, so that's how they come up with that number.
And if you're really interested, if you kind of want to be a nerd.
Jackie is.
You can go through this document. There's a lot of information in there. If you follow through with it, you can see all the formulas and how they determine everything. It's all in this document. As long as when I give them the input is correct, then this is correct.
One other thing that I, that they informed us about was the Ag to School Tax Credit. I wanted to know where that was in here, and it is not. It is going to be on the Truth in Taxation, and your tax statement that you get in December, they showed us where that will be on your tax statement. So, the Ag to School is going to be given through the county on your tax statement, and you'll see how much that is, so. It comes out in December. That was, I wish there would have been more. I wish we would have had it in here, but we do not see that until, taxpayers will not see that until December. It'll be on their tax statement. We need to approve this, so.
We need to, yes, certify it at the maximum.
All right. So, any other questions for them on this? Do I have a motion to approve the levy limitation and certification report for 2017 payable 2018?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Botts. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Erdman.
We need to state that we want to certify at the max.
Correct.
With the certification at the maximum level.
Thank you, Mr. Botts.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Erdman. Any other discussion? Any others discussions?
We need a second motion for the separate age, the levy, the discussion as well.
Oh, so we need two separate motions and two separate?
Well, yes.
We'll approve that one.
Do we do it at a time?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. So, this, we're doing the approval of the levy limitation report?
At the maximum.
At the maximum?
Certif, yep. We certify the levy at the maximum.
All right, so, hearing no other discussion, signify by, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That passes. So, now the second one, we're going for?
The Truth in Taxation?
Truth and, it's a date. So, that's January 8th?
No, December.
Our December meeting is 18th, that's within the timeline, so it's evident, 6 o'clock.
You used to have to have a separate meeting. Now, you can do the Truth in Taxation within your regular school board meeting, so, but you still have to set the date. And our Truth in Taxation meeting is December 18th.
At 6 o'clock. You have to move the date and the time to 6 o'clock.
At 6 o'clock.
So, I need a motion to approve that?
Yes.
For the tax, the Truth in Taxation on December 18th at 6 o'clock. Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Erdman. Any other discussion on that? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of December 18th at 6 o'clock being the Truth in Taxation along with our board meeting? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to 8.3, approve facilities use agreement with Midwest.
Have fun.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Have a good time.
Have fun.
Enjoy. Do you have like a foghorn?
Smile, smile.
Bellbell? Have fun, Jeff.
Yep, thank you.
For Midwest Agreement, second semester. Any comments on that?
We use our facility for construction trades programs, so.
Okay.
Construction class. Do this every year.
Do I have a motion to approve the facilities use agreement with Midwest? Thank you, Mrs. Pals. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Talbert. All right. Any other discussion on that? Any other thoughts or questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the facilities use agreement with Midwest? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 8.4, approve snow removal quotes for 2017-18. One quote.
Was there hourly? Is that correct? It's not in there, but I'm, it's an hourly rate quote. Is that correct?
Yes.
It just doesn't state it.
And they, they've done our snow removal for a while, and do a good job, and don't have any issues. I think the rates are reasonable.
Do I have a motion to approve the snow removal quote? Thank you, Mr. Oy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. All, any other discussion? Thoughts? Questions? There's my three right in one. All those in favor. All those in favor of approving the snow removal quote for 2017-18? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 8.5, approve resolution appointing election judges for the special election on November 7th, 2017.
Still have to find a couple more, but I have not too great of them.
How many do you need total?
I generally get 10 for the first shift and 10 for the second shift, just so we don't want to be slow, so.
All right. Do I have a motion? Ooh, thank you, Mrs. Talbert, and thank you, Mrs. Pals. Is that good?
That works.
Any other discussion on that? Any other discussion? All right, those in favor of approving the resolution appointing election judges for the special election on November 7th, 2017? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 8.6, approval of gifts to the school. And we'll do these all in one. 8.6.1, the Arrow Athletic Booster Club, of a donation of $634 for resistance bands and making the chain start kit for baseball. 8.6.2, all these are the Booster Club donation of $240 for baseballs, $340 for ball mower for tennis, $134.81 for trophies for baseball, $2,500 for the, $2523.08 for the golfer rain suits, carry bags, and umbrellas, for the wrestling program, $274.50. Wowee, $630 for the batting mat pro for baseball, $1,450 for the transportation to the US Bank Stadium for baseball, $825.60 for pellet clay bricks for baseball. And then we have the Pipestone JCs donation 100 towards the purchase of the popcorn machine. Do I have a motion to approve all those wonderful gifts? Thank you to every single one of them.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Erdman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Talbert. Any other discussion on that? Big old shout-out, "Thank you." Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you again. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Erdman. Thank you, Mrs. Weiss, for the seconds.